From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. This is the regular meeting, Tuesday, February 6, 2024, the Kern County Board of Supervisors. First item is roll call.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Next item is the salute to the flag. This morning, it's going to be led by Sergeant Eric Martinez. He served in the United States Marine Corps from 1988 to 1996 as an embarkation sergeant and bulk fuel specialist. He participated in the first Persian Gulf War, Operation Desert Shield, in various locations in the Middle East from 1990 through 1991. He earned an extensive list of awards and commendations throughout his service. He has since earned his BA in psychology. He's been married 32 years and now serves in the veterans' community as the Finance Officer for the California Veterans Assistance Foundation. Sergeant, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I neglected to tell you to remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer, but you guys know the drill. Thank you.
Chairman, can I just see, our gentleman is leaving, can I just say something?
You may.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yes, Sergeant, thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Couch, what a nice touch. Thank you for that.
We're trying to have a veteran lead the flag salute every meeting.
I absolutely loved hearing about the particulars of his service. What a privilege. Thank you, Chairman.
You bet. The next item is our Pet of the Week. We have Nick backstage somewhere with a special one today. Now, can you hear me? This guy has been in the shelter about a month.
Over a month, yes. Oh, good morning. Yeah, Nacho, who is Nacho Dog yet.
Nice.
He's been with us for over a month now. He doesn't get seen very well because he tends to get a little overwhelmed at the shelter and he hides under his bed, but he's a sweet boy. He's about five years old. He's already neutered, so he's ready for his new home. He's available for adoption right now.
So tell us that again, it's Nacho Dog yet.
That's correct.
All right, so let's find Nacho a forever home. Thank you, Nick. Next item is the Consent Agenda. All items listed with a C-A or a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The C-A represents Consent Agenda for the Board of Supervisors. The C represents the Consent Agenda for the Kern Sanitation Authority, or the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District, or the IHSS Public Authority. We consider these first, and they can be approved all by one motion. If anybody in the audience would like to make a comment or ask questions regarding any item, now is the time to do so. You need to do that prior to us taking a vote. Remember, the board can remove any item for separate consideration. It will be considered as listed in sequence. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment about, let me tell you what's on the agenda? I see when the clerk looks at me like that, I know I've forgotten to do something. Starts on page two. Items one, item three, also, item four on the Consent Agenda has been withdrawn and will not be considered today. Item five and eight on page two also are on the Consent Agenda. All the items on page three, nine through 15, all the items on page four, 16 through 24, items 25 through 27 on page five, and items 29 through 31 are on the Consent Agenda, 28 is not, and all the items on page six, 32 through 38 are on the Consent Agenda. Anybody here like to make a comment or ask a question about any item on the Consent Agenda? And item four has been removed. Okay, I'll return to the board.
Motion on consent?
Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
That brings us back to almost the top of page two, item two, which is a proclamation proclaiming February 24th as Safe Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Kern County, and this proclamation will be presented by Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Good morning, Chairman and colleagues. It's my honor this morning to present this certificate proclaiming February 2024 as Safely Surrendered Baby Month in Kern County. As you can see, I've got a lot of amazing people helping the county in this mission. And as I understand, so far, since the implementation of this program, nearly 100 babies have been safely surrendered in Kern County. That's outstanding. I won't go on for too long. I understand we have a video to watch, but I wanted to share this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, proclaimed February 2024 as Safely Surrendered Baby Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, David Couch. Thank you, Lito. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Supervisor Peters. Appreciate that. Thank you for this proclamation proclaiming Safe Surrender Awareness Month in Kern County. I'm joined here today by an illustrious, amazing group of individuals and organizations, so please indulge me as I go through my list of individuals to recognize. From DHS, I have Maria Bermudez, who's Assistant Director of Child Welfare Services, Limbanya Sandoval, Program Director, Coalition Chair Janice Slagel, Larissa Ogden, Program Director, Janine Renaud from DHS as well, and Erin Gillespie is also Program Director. From Kern County Fire, we have Kern County Fire Chief Aaron Duncan and Public Information Officer Erica Bain. Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, Erin Rogers. Co-ordinator of Foster Care, we have Norma Rhodes from Kern County Public Health. We have Angela Bivins and Wanda Brown. From First Five, we have Amy Travis. And from Kern Family Healthcare, we have Anna Lester, Daisy Torres, and Deanna Navarro. So I just wanted to share those names with you because a lot of this work that you hear about, about safely surrendering these babies go along with the coalition, all the hard work and effort. So since 2006, DHS has spearheaded this coalition, and again, just to create continued awareness about safe surrender. So what is the law? The law is really just a safe option, an alternative, for a pregnant woman or mother that has a crisis or is unable to care for that child, to be able to have an alternative rather than abandoning their babies. Just to give you a little history, in years past, prior to the adoption of this law, we had 20 to 30 babies in California being abandoned and often left to pass or die, which is really tragic when you think about not having an alternative. This law provides that alternative to them. As long as the baby is unharmed and safe, there's no prosecution, no names, no blame given to that parent that's obviously surrendering that child. There is a cooling period of 14 days where, in case the parent decides to change their mind, they have 14 days to do so. But after the 14-day period, the baby is then available for adoption, which is a tremendous honor and gift, to say the least. Supervisor Peters alluded to, in 2023, we had three babies that were safely surrendered. And since the inception in 2006, we had 98 babies safely surrendered in Kern County, which is amazing. In California, that number was closer to 1,500 in general. So during the month of February, the Coalition will be sharing a lot of information, creating more public awareness about this wonderful program through theater, social media, guest bus ads, and then we also have a PSA that will be running, and I have it for you to view now, so if I can have that video played.
For new mothers, moments of crisis can lead to the unthinkable, but even then, there is hope. With Safe Surrender, you can safely surrender your newborn baby into the hands of any fire station or emergency room staff in Kern County. There is no shame, no blame, no names.
So the law isn't doing what it's intended to do, which is obviously reduce the amount of abandoned babies we have, not only in this county but in the state. But aside from that, the real impact is the opportunity we give a child and family to come together. And I'm so honored today to be joined by Anthony and Ally Davis, who's come forward to actually share their story with us. I'm grateful they are here, and they're here with their son Nathan, so I'm going to turn it over to them to share their inspirational story.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is my family. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you today. I'm Ally Davis, along with my husband Anthony Davis, and this is our son Nathan. He's 10. We stand before you as parents who have experienced firsthand the profound impact of the Safe Surrender Program. Nathan, our youngest, who is standing here today, is a living testament to the program's values and the compassion it embodies. Nathan was our 50th foster child and third adopted child, but Nathan was also a safe surrender. Nathan started life as a 23-week micro preemie, born at 1 pound 4 ounces and 10 and 1/2 inches long. Nathan was born at a local hospital. At the time of his birth, his birth mother made the selfless decision to safe surrender Nathan while at the hospital. That decision and the Safe Surrender Program allows Nathan to get the much-needed care and loving forever home his 1-pound body needed to thrive. Today, the young man you see before you is a healthy, happy, thriving 10-year-old who enjoys riding bikes, playing video games, and excels at most sports. He is also becoming a bit of a baseball prodigy. All the things you would expect from a well-loved 10-year-old, but perhaps the most important thing to us is that he is often described by his teachers and coaches as a kind and compassionate young man, who is also almost as tall as his mama. That's a significant upgrade from his premature birth. As you can see, our family has been positively impacted by the Safe Surrender Program. As it says, the Safe Surrender Program is about saving lives. It recognizes the desperate circumstances, sometimes led by birth moms to make difficult choices. By providing a safe and confidential way to surrender newborns, we prevent tragic outcomes and offer hope to families in crisis. The Safe Surrender Program involves the entire community. When Anthony and I talk to people about Safe Surrender, we often hear them say, "Oh yeah, that's the program that drops off baby at fire stations." While fire stations play a crucial role in this program, it extends to the hospitals as well. They are also equipped to handle safe surrenders confidentially. We want birth moms to know that they can also safely surrender their child at a hospital, no judgment, no repercussions, just a chance for a better future in this child's life. In conclusion, the Safe Surrender Program embodies our collective community to life, passion, and community. Nathan, our beloved son, is a living testament to the program's success. Let us continue to spread awareness and ensure that no child is abandoned where there is a safe alternative. Thank you for your attention, and may we continue to live our lives through compassion and understanding.
Again, thank you for this proclamation, and thank you, Ally and Anthony and Nathan, for coming down and sharing your story. Just one little other piece of information, we will be having a press conference tomorrow at 10:30 in front of the fire station, I want to get the right number, 65 on Meacham Road, so if you all can join us today again to promote this awareness. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you all for being here, very much.
Chairman, I've punched in.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Perez.
No, no problem. Chairman, thank you so much. Lito, thank you for this presentation and for the display of all the hands involved in the loving of our neighbors in crisis, in good times, in bad times. All of us face crisis, all of us, and we know, our family members, we know, you know, how real this is. And I just so appreciate, you know, the spirit and the heart that's so evident, it's so obvious and so evident in what you do. Ms. Davis, did I say that right? My goodness, you are so remarkably presenting. Your words are just so, you know, perfectly balanced, really, you know, really perfectly balanced. You know, you'd make a great elected official if I, you know, sorry to inject that in this, but I couldn't help but think, wow, you, what a talented, beautiful family, and your words are just so meaningful, mostly because you live them. You know, 50th foster child, my parents were foster kids, we had dozens and dozens, and it's complicated, and that's a real, that's a real labor of love, and I'd love to see your thriving son. I mean, he was, he was really lit- I mean, he was, he was really lit up when you said he was becoming a baseball prodigy. It was that and that he's almost taller than you. Those two really, really got him going. So good luck to you, Nathan. We really wish the best for you. You have such love around you. You're so lucky, you're so blessed. So thank you, guys. This is God's work. It's the best of us as Kern County. It's who we really are. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you all for your efforts. The next item is public presentations, but I'm going to use the chairman's prerogative. And we're going to take Item 7, which is Board Member Announcements and Reports, out of order. There's someone here that Supervisor Flores would like to recognize very quickly, and then we'll get to public presentations next. So now, it's Board Member Announcements and Reports. Anyone other than you, Supervisor Flores? Don't see anybody.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman Couch, for your indulgence. I just, it's Black History Month, so this is really fortuitous and long overdue. Oftentimes, when we think of Kern County greats, we think of Buck Owens, Merrill Haggard, Chief Justice Earl Warren, Kevin Harvick, Chuck Yeager, who broke the sound barrier. But little is known about Art Williams, who broke the color barrier in the National Baseball League, in the major leagues. And so today, we have here his brother, Dr. Art Williams, who is the author of the book and life of his brother, by Dr. Audi Williams, and it's called Unbelievable, because it's truly an unbelievable story about a family who started off as sharecroppers in Arkansas, who made the great migration west to California, and is literally part of the American dream, but also the Kern County dream, that through hard work, through perseverance, anything can be accomplished despite the barriers. So we always talk about, well, we often talk about trailblazers, pioneers, and those usually, that's usually associated with the best of times and the easy and fun and exciting. He was a pioneer, he was a trailblazer through tough times, through obstacles, but he was undeterred, and he did it, and he made the big leagues, literally. And so I want to come down and have his brother talk and present him a certificate from our board in recognition of the life and legacy and the career of Art Williams. So, Dr. Williams, would you step down and meet me at the podium, please? Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And so just a, just a couple snapshots and statistics about Art Williams, his brother. He was the first African-American umpire in the National League, wearing number 25 during his career. He umpired 806 Major League Baseball games in his six-year career. He also was an umpire in the 1975 National League Championship Series in the early '70s. And so when I was watching cartoons and Scooby Doo, eating breakfast on Saturday, your brother was, was umpiring Major League Baseball games. And what a, what a significant accomplishment. We are very proud of your family's history for everything he did and accomplished, and it lives on through you and through your wonderful book that captures the story. And at this time, I let you talk about your book and your family and the great legacy of your brother.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Good morning. This is, boy, this is a wonderful day that God made. I mean, it was, I'm so happy to be up here to speak for my brother. It's just, it's just a wonderful feeling. Basically, I want to thank Supervisor Flores and the rest of the supervisors. And on behalf of my family and Art's family, we would like to shout out, thank you, thank you, thank you for recognizing the compliment of my brother Art Williams, who stayed in contact with his dream and was a trailblazer that opened doors for other black umpires. He is still loved and respected by many. I can almost vision him right by my side, standing next to me, ending this historical occasion with that big grin and uttering his favorite saying, unbelievable. Okay. Thank you. And before I sit down, I would, I would like to share with all of you that on Saturday, February 24th, which, by the way, would have been my brother's 90th birthday. Anyway, at noon, I will be at the Bill Memorial Library, located at 701 Truxton, which is right down the street from here, talking about my award-winning book, Unbelievable, The Live Journey of Art Williams, Baseball First Black National League Umpire. I will also show the award-winning documentary short, which has been in several film festivals and shown both nationally and internationally. I will also be signing books that are brought to the event. I have flyers in the back of the room. Supervisor has flyers to be given to them up front, and you, all of you are welcome to take a flyer with you. And I would like to say, and in any, in this, I would like to thank Mr. Flores and the rest of the supervisors, and any audience, for the privilege of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
So lastly, Mr. Chairman, we have a board certificate signed by our board in positive recognition of the contributions to Major League Baseball and to the advancement of civil rights. This is dedicated to the family of Art Williams, sir. God bless you, and God bless your family.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, that gentleman with the camera is recording this historical event. That's my grandson, Randy.
Thank you for being here today, and thank you, Supervisor Flores. That was, that was nice. That brings us back. Seeing no other Board Member Announcements and Reports, I'm going to go back to Item 6, which is public presentations. This meeting, portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter that's not on the agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the board. You can, we may respond briefly, but we might, we're not going to engage in a real back-and-forth during public presentations. And we try to keep it to two minutes. Please do your best. Mr. Robles, you're up first. You look, you look to be eager this morning. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Robles, R-O-B-L-E-S, and I am a veteran. And I was watching a rerun the other day of the program, Hogan's Heroes. It's a story about a World War II prisoner war camp in which the prisoners have compromised their guard and are pretty much running rampant. The guard, a hapless Sergeant Schwartz, is so compromised that all he does is run around saying, "I see nothing, I see nothing," which made me flash on this board. Thing is, you put up a camera security system over your ballot drop boxes, and they see nothing. So maybe we should call this the Schwartz Security Camera System, or maybe we could call it the Espinoza Folly. I understand that there's going to be a ribbon cutting for your highway to nowhere. Maybe we should have another ribbon cutting for your security boxes that see nothing. I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robles. Who'll be next? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mary Little, L-I-T-T-L-E. Thank you, Supervisor Peters, for that proclamation for the social workers. I used to be a social worker, and it's near and dear to my heart. They do an awesome job, and it's one of the hardest jobs in the county. Many of you may know that I'm running for Supervisor Area 1, and I'm asking the Lord for righteousness on this journey. But it's election time again, and our elections seem to still be a mess. I've gotten many people that have contacted me with reports of ballots being mailed to deceased people, duplicate ballots being mailed to the same address, ballots mailed to the wrong address, and ballots mailed out of state, and more. So as a supervisor, I would ask for answers to these questions. We need to know why there's waste in our county and why all this is, taxpayers are paying for this. It's a travesty to us as Kern County citizens. The whole country of Argentina was able to vote on paper ballots in 24 hours and get results. I know we can go back to that. I'm wondering how much the cost is for this whole process from beginning to end of our ballots being mailed out and being counted, because I'm sure it's astronomical. I'd like to know the cost efficiency of going back to paper ballots, and just to see if there's a comparison there, and how much money we are actually spending on this process. So thank you for letting me speak, and I wish both of you best wishes in your run for supervisor.
Thank you. Ms. Little, do you have names of the people that you referenced when you spoke, right when you started, the people that told you, hey, we got ballots here for people who are deceased?
I do. I have pictures as well.
Could you provide those to us?
I can.
Thank you. Because that's something that the auditor controller needs to get, but they don't know that if they don't have the information.
Well, we have reported it in the past, but I can get that to you.
But this is the most current instance of it that we've.
I agree, and I appreciate that. And how would you like me to do that?
Well, you can either give that information to Mr. Zervis, or you can give it directly to Ms. Espinoza, whichever you like. There she is, right there.
Okay. I can do that at a later time, so I have to get that all in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Good morning and happy Tuesday. As some of you may recall, my name is Taylor Thomas, T-A-Y-L-O-R-T-H-O-M-A-S. I'm the Vice President of Legislative Affairs at CSU Bakersfield. I recently gave public comment extending our gratitude on behalf of your assistance in the placement of our permanent ballot drop-off box on our campus. In honor of that, we will be hosting a formal ribbon-cutting ceremony on February 14th from 12 to 1:00 p.m. on the CSU campus on our student union patio. I'm so sorry to steal you all from your Valentines. That was not the intention. We are really thrilled and grateful that several of you have already RSVP'd and will be joining us as honorary guest speakers. With everything being digitalized these days, I wanted to extend this invitation in person as well as invite our community members to attend this event. We hope to see you there, and thank you again on behalf of CSU Bakersfield Associated Students Incorporated. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Supervisor Perez?
Yes, it's so nice to see you here, and it would be so nice, too, if this was a regular thing that you do, letting this board know, you know, up-to-date activities on campus that, you know, relate to the whole county. So it is really, you are so refreshing. You remind me that I was young once, you know, a long time ago. But really, it's nice to see you. Thank you for being here, and we'd love to hear from you. I mean, you know, not just, just to show up, but when things are happening, you know, keep us informed. We should all be, right, in the same network and moving in the same direction as a county or, or, you know, lifting each other up. So thank you very much. You're a very impressive young lady.
Before our next speaker, I'm going to go to Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. With your indulgence, before we continue with public comment, I was going to see, I see our auditor controller, Ms. Espinoza's here, and before we get too far away from the remarks on elections, I was going to see if she might be able to respond to some of this.
Let me, I was going to ask, actually, are there others that would like to speak on that exact same subject before she responds? Mr. Linfesty, we have one. Any others? Mr. Linfesty, please, please come forward. So after, after Mr. Linfesty will ask Ms. Espinoza if she wants, would like to speak. Thank you.
I just want to say, I, I'm a little confused about the term "paper ballots," because I thought that's what I was voting on when I got it in the mail Friday. I filled it out as a paper ballot. I mailed it in Saturday. I thought so far, things have gotten really smooth. I'll look forward to seeing when I get my notification that I actually did it. I also want to say, I really like the, the way the, the website is being organized. It's more user-friendly. I've been able to find more information more quickly than I was with the older design. So I just appreciate whoever, I guess the office was responsible for that. So thank you for, so far, a pretty smooth voting operation, at least as far as what I, I experienced. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Espinoza? And after, I'm having her go ahead of you all because she's commenting on this exact subject, and then we'll go to the rest of you. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. I have some updates for the public on the election, but I first want to address Amy Espinoza, Auditor Controller, County Clerk. Mr. Robles came up and mentioned that there's no, well, first, he is mistaken in thinking that the drop box locations and the camera project is the responsibility of your board. As an elected official, that's my responsibility, and I have been working with ITS, Information Technology Services and General Services, to get those cameras up and running. We will be looking at a different system, as I've mentioned to many of you, I've mentioned here in front of the board before, for November, because in the initial run of the scope of the project, live streaming was not incorporated in that. The intent was to have people come in and be able to observe during our normal operating hours, the way other observers do, and we are working on that right now. And then the paper ballots. To Mr. Linfesty, thank you, sir. I didn't mention your name last week, or two weeks ago, when I, when I addressed everyone else's comments. But to Ms. Little's concern that we are not voting on paper ballots, every single ballot that is cast in this election in Kern County is a paper ballot. Even the ballots that are posted on our ICX machines, the manual tally, or the automatic tallying devices, ballot marking devices, a ballot, a paper ballot is printed out so that the voter can confirm their vote, and that paper ballot is dropped into the ballot box. So I'm not sure where the idea that Kern County does not vote on paper ballots come from, but that is absolutely untrue. Now getting into the update that I was intending, just really quickly. Ballots went out last week. They've been hitting voters' mailboxes. We've been getting calls. I know your office has been getting calls because of the timing of the ballots going out versus sample ballots going out. Sample ballots dropped yesterday, so voters can see those in their mailboxes coming as early as today. I want to mention to your board that one of the concerns with the sample ballots coming out after the ballots is candidate statements not being in the hands of the voters prior to them completing their ballots. And while we're past that point this time, we do have our candidate statements out on our website, and going forward in future elections, we will be posting candidate statements prior to sample ballots going out. Our drop boxes are opening, our cameras are up and running, and I'm currently working with ITS to set up our devices that the public can actually view those on in my office. And then also, we're working on a Life of a Ballot short video that will go out with our February 2024 newsletter, and that is for, I know the state put one out, but we're also putting one out just to, to inform voters, to educate them, what really happens once they submit their ballot back to our office, what is the process that goes through, all the way up until it is counted and included in the final tally results. Supervisor Couch, I also want to mention, I am, I have not forgotten about your request from two, two weeks ago. I am looking at that, and as time permits, I'm having staff pool reports to get the information that you actually requested as far as the activity on registration, adds, deletes, updates, things like that. So I am working on that. And that concludes my comments. If anyone has any questions. If anyone has any questions.
I don't see anyone punched in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are still on item six, which is public presentations. Who'll be next?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. No, she's not. Thank you. My name is Julie Roja and I'm an IHSS home care provider and I've been caring for my daughter Jenna for several years now. She depends on me to accompany her to her medical appointments, her therapies and other life-related services so that I can collaborate with treatment teams and be part of her supportive system. She depends on me to care for her. However, that sometimes means that I have to put my own health concerns at risk. For example, the lack of dental insurance, vision insurance. It forces IHSS providers like myself to choose between paying for basic things such as our groceries or utilities or eyeglasses. Not having the right prescription for eyeglasses can cause possible negative consequences. And that's things like headaches, neck pain, dizziness. My daughter, she needs me to see. I need to see. I need to be able to see her medication bottles. I need to be able to read her prescriptions. I need to be able to see when I'm driving her to and from these appointments. I don't think that we should be forced to have to pick and choose what we can afford due to the lack of benefits. We shouldn't have to choose whether we pay out of pocket for things like dental work or eyeglasses. Sometimes those can run up to the hundreds and thousands or just not pay a bill this month. Kern County representatives, you all need to recognize that what we, IHSS home care providers, do is real work and we are deserving of real worker benefits. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Raymond Dominguez and I'm here today as an ISSS home care provider. I've been providing for my mother nearly about three years. She requires daily at-home dialysis treatments. Treatments she relies on me for her. I need to be able to see these medicines and treatments to give my mother on a daily basis. Without my glasses, I won't be able to care for her. Unfortunately, as an ISSS provider, I do not have vision insurance, which means these glasses I have to pay out of my pocket at $500 a pair. I have to budget my money. This way I won't run short on my rent or my food. Having vision insurance should be a must for all providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Monica Escalante and I am an IHSS provider from Bakersfield. I've been a care provider for several people in the community for several years now. Not having access to simple things like dental benefits as a provider impacts my life as well as my clients. As an IHSS provider, oftentimes I am the only person who sees the client as family members can often be unavailable. A simple smile goes a long way for the clients. A smile, a conversation brightens their day and can affect their whole outlook on life. Clients often rely on IHSS home care providers for socializing, which is an important part of daily activities as well as mental health. Providers need to be able to continue and be available to, be able to, and available to continue to the care for their clients. And infected teeth, foul smelling breath, pain makes that almost impossible. We deserve dental benefits to continue doing the daily work that we do every day. Our clients need us and IHSS providers need dental care. I wear this sweater today because I'm often thought of as Wonder Woman, which I am not. We need to be able to take care of ourselves. The better able that we are to take care of ourselves, the better able we are going to be able to take care of our clients. There are several people who need help in this community. I do not work for a family member. I work for other people in the community and there are several of us who are not here today to be able to represent that. The geriatric community is large. The mental health community is large. We're finally getting together to home them, but who's going to provide the care for them? So IHSS is a program that does have its flaws, but we ask that you not be part of the problem but that you be part of the solution and help us find ways to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Escalante.
Hi, good morning. My name is Vivian Anfoso. That's spelled V I V I A N and my last name is Anfoso, A N F O S O. I'm here on behalf of our home care providers who couldn't make it today and I'm also an IHSS provider myself. As a home care provider, I have no benefits despite having to care for somebody who's both in their 90s and my other client is somebody with developmental disabilities, an adult who's 19 and of course also my younger sister. So having something like a dental insurance would be critical to my life. Because of the extreme prices for dental work, I have been forced to travel over four hours out of town to find affordable dentists. I've also been forced to pay in town over $300 to get something like a tooth extracted because I couldn't afford the $3,000 bill of Arukano. My clients are 95 years old and 19. They can't be left alone. I should not be forced to choose between continuing to do my job, which is life-saving for those two folks, or caring for my health. Dental insurance is critical for IHSS providers. As previously mentioned, an infected tooth or impacted wisdom tooth coming in prevents providers from doing their life-saving work. I'm asking you to look inward and appeal to your sense of compassion for your constituents when we return to the bargaining table and offer us the kinds of benefits afforded to other workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sandy Moreno. I'm an IHSS provider in California City. Today I'll be speaking on behalf of one of our union sisters, Sydney O'Connor. She couldn't be here today. She lives in Tehachapi. She's taking care of our client and her client's in the hospital right now. But I do want to, I want to tell you what her message is for the board. So my name is Sydney O'Connor. I'm an IHSS home care provider and today I'm here to ask that you offer us more regarding benefits at the bargaining table. We've made great strides, but I want to explain why benefits such as dental can be life-changing to someone like me. I've had a chipped tooth for over a year. A chipped tooth can escalate to a cracked tooth and this can create serious health issues over time. Despite being aware of the potential complications, I must bargain with myself. Do I go into debt by paying for out-of-pocket expenses at the dentist because I don't have any type of dental insurance? Or do I keep my household cloth and housed? Having dental insurance as a benefit for providers would significantly, significantly increase my quality of life. I'm not the only provider with stories about having to delay visiting a dentist and this ultimately leading to worse complications, which can lead to even worse financial strains. I am asking that the next time we sit down at the bargaining table, that you remember our stories and understand the difference these benefits will make in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public statements this morning? Seeing none. That brings us over to, is it item 28? Supervisor Perez?
I would just like to say, before you guys leave, I really appreciate you being here and the tone and the spirit by which you are telling your story.
I agree.
I think it's powerful. It's compelling. You do such an important job in this community for so many people who are our neighbors, our family members. You know, the role you play in the larger puzzle of healthcare for this community is so priceless. And I just believe wholeheartedly we are desperate to get to a solution to meet your needs. I really, I know it doesn't seem that way, but that's what I believe and I believe that we will get there. But I want to say thank you for your just compelling, you know, really just incredible way in which you tell your story. And the Wonder Woman lady was really exceptional. My goodness. I mean, thank you. That is really paints a picture and I believe my colleagues want to get there. I do. And, you know, let's keep doing this, keep telling your stories. They're powerful. They are Kern County and we need to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, my mic.
We'll give them a minute to.
Thank you, Chairman.
You bet. To clear out so it's quiet. But the next item is item 28. It is a presentation on Public Health Services 2024 Health Education and Awareness Campaign. It is called "A Healthier Kern: One Heart at a Time." And I believe Bryn Kerrigan, who's at attention over there, is ready to give us that presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bryn Kerrigan, your Director for Kern County Public Health. The item before your board this morning is a presentation on the launch of our 2024 Annual Health Initiative, "A Healthier Kern: One Heart at a Time." As you may recall, over the last couple of years, our department has made it a new tradition to institute annual campaigns to educate and encourage Kern County residents to live a healthier lifestyle. Specifically in 2022, the department issued a call to action to our residents with our "Let's Get Healthy 2022" campaign. And last year, our department embarked on a collaborative, health-centric campaign with Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services called "Grounded in Health 2023." In honor of our new tradition today, we are launching yet another health education campaign. We have affectionately entitled this year's campaign, "A Healthier Kern: One Heart at a Time." "A Healthier Kern" was devised in response to the evolving landscape of public health challenges. As we continue to recover from the lasting effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, we recognize that numerous public health challenges persist, if not have even worsened, requiring a comprehensive long-term approach. "A Healthier Kern" focuses on addressing 10 major public health challenges, including improvements to healthcare systems, mental health crisis support, tackling substance abuse, infectious disease control, reducing food insecurity, ensuring food safety, promoting sexual and reproductive health, protecting environmental health, and combating and managing chronic diseases such as cancer and diabetes. This campaign will be data-driven and will highlight Kern County Public Health's programs and services and the essential collaborations we share with various community partners to serve our community and address these health challenges. The goal of the campaign is to bridge the gap between our department and the community we serve by allowing the community to better know our employees and our programs, to rebuild trust with the residents and families we serve, and to encourage Kern County residents to live an overall healthier lifestyle. To help inform our community about the numerous programs and services Kern County Public Health has to offer, we have developed and are launching our new public health catalog today. These beauties are hot off the press and I have provided a copy to each of you for your viewing pleasure. In addition to discussing our health challenges and highlighting community programs and services, this campaign will emphasize the dedication of our staff and community partners to the community we serve. "One Heart at a Time" will showcase stories and health successes with a goal to inspire and engage our community, proving that we are not just another governmental entity but an integral part of the community, working hand in hand to improve the well-being of every individual, one heart at a time. Our very own Chairman of the Board, Supervisor Couch, Kern County's Chief Economic Development Officer, Jim Damian, and City of Bakersfield Mayor, Karen Go, have graciously agreed to share their who they want to be healthier for in our campaign PSA. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would like to ask for the PSA to be played now.
Sure.
The journey to achieving good health is different for everyone and usually requires a little motivation. Ask yourself, who do I want to be healthier for in 2024?
I want to be healthy for the residents of Bakersfield.
I'm getting healthy in 2024 so that I can make sure Kern County is the best place to start and grow a business.
I'm getting healthy in 2024 so I can be around for a long time so I can spoil my grandkids.
Join me to be healthy in 2024.
This PSA will be played on all local television and radio stations and in local movie theaters throughout 2024, motivating and inspiring our community to find their motivation to get healthier in 2024. We are inviting our community to join us in creating "A Healthier Kern: One Heart at a Time," with the ask of who or what do you want to be healthier for in 2024? Post your motivation on social media, tag Kern County Public Health and use the hashtag #healthierkern so that we can share our community's stories on our social media platforms. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the wonderful media and marketing teams within Kern County Public Health, who are sitting right over here, who helped envision, who helped envision this campaign and turn it into a reality. Embarking on a year-long campaign is no easy feat, but this team is remarkable and continues to make it a reality year after year. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
So thank you for that. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Perez, is it not working for you?
It's not working.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. I'll be brief, Chair, I promise. Two things. The event I attended at Public Health where I had to get on a scale and have my numbers read and to be confronted with my eating habits, if you will, was really a stunning moment. One, because I was shocked at my weight, frankly. And two, the manner in which it was handled and presented to me was just so easy. It was, I didn't feel ashamed. I didn't feel there was some competitive nature of what we were doing. I felt like it was a communal event to say, check in with yourself. Where are you? Where's your body? It really was, it was strikingly communal and positive and it gave me a real sense. I'll tell you something that I'm just shocked about. You had some papers that said, you know, here's some healthy foods to eat. I felt like I was doing Noah's homework. It's like, what do you eat? Like forcing myself to say, what do I eat on a regular basis? I got to go and circle all the bad stuff I've been eating. You know, I mean, I can't lie to myself. I know what's on that form and I know what I do. So I just thought it was really practical, easy, but not shameful. And that was really the critical piece because I felt like the environment was supportive and people, the areas where I did score well, I got good credit for. And the other ones is obvious I needed to take some action and it was some real practical ways. And I promise you, after that day, I legitimately thought more and differently about my food. And particular, it's just incredible how those little reminders, those little taps can really just, you know, get your attention. I see Paul Linfesti agrees with me, which I appreciate very much. So that one. And then also, too, I attended the mobile clinic out in my district with BHRS. And that was, I thought, just really incredible because there were folks there that looked like they have some real challenges, right, that you can see. But to have that be so close, so near and so friendly, you know, I just could see there was a warmth there in the process that is just so good, so positive. So I want to tip my hat to you on that and tell you thank you. And I do have my protein shake here because, you know, I got a little reminder. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I think it's smart of you to have a why. Because everybody starts the year off with, I'm going to bring my cholesterol down, I'm going to lose weight, I'm going to walk, I'm going to exercise, whatever. But why are you doing that? And I think that's the motivation. That helps keep people on track. So good job. Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions. Any public comments? You should go sit there, Paul. That is, that concludes that item and that concludes the morning session. Just need a motion to adjourn to close session. Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.